Council meeting Tuesday, May 11th, 4:00 PM in the Government Center. Let's rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm glad the cops showed up. Yeah, this is never...
Never know.
I'll pay you ten bucks if you arrest Counselor Bender.
There goes the civility.
Yes.
Counselor Bender. Counselor Mertzic. Counselor McDonald is absent. Counselor Hendry. Counselor Finslin. Counselor Herrick. Counselor McKenzie is excused. Counselor Dobek. Eight present. The special common council meeting was called by Council President Finslin and Vice President Bridge submitting committee assignments.
I need nine point one. I need a motion in a second. Motion for Counselor Dobek, seconded by Counselor Bridge. Any discussion? Okay, Counselor Olson was the first to win the on-light ward.
I'll keep this brief but to the point. I've got some concerns on the way all of this went down. Right from the appointments for President and Vice President, although I don't think there was anything wrong with it, we got into a situation where my abstaining along with a couple of other people seemed to be a real big issue. And as far as I can see, what we did last year for President and Vice President, the mayor did nothing but abstain either and there was nothing wrong with that at that point. It's just a position you take. It's not voting for or against anything. It may be just a disagreement of what went on and that's what we had. We're also, I don't want to say accused, but the mention of stopping government, bringing it to a screeching halt, and I think what we did was question government in some of the appointments that were done, the process thereof, and I didn't agree with that either. But we had the same problem last year. And there was one over the Public Works Committee. When asked, he wanted to be a voting member and it was a new committee to you, so we had appointed him as an alternate. And that worked out in the end. I know there was a little bit of concern at the beginning as to the decision that Bob and I made and we went on with it and everything was fine. The other one, Tom, was with you, being on the Finance Committee. I had Dr. Jean Vito and she thought that me being the President last year, that I should sit on the Finance Committee. We discussed moving, or Bob and I discussed moving him as an alternate. There was a little bit of concern there and we switched that around, so we were a voting member. So getting to the point where Counselors serving as alternates on committee, and I actually did it last year, I was an alternate on two committees as a President, so I don't think there's any big deal about that either. I was hoping Denise would be here because I think she got caught in the middle of all this stuff.
She's on her way. She's having car trouble.
Okay. But anyway, I think she got caught in the middle of all this. And with Greg's concerns about the committees that he was on, I guess the judgment here, when we, or Mayor, when you made your selection of President and Vice President stating seniority experience, I wish that had been passed on to the decisions that you two guys made. Because if we had a problem with Greg Mertzic's attendance record, why would you appoint him to three committees that don't have any alternates? The ultimate purpose on committees is so that we have representation. If we've got committees that don't have representation, we've got a man that can't be at meetings, I don't think that that was the best judgment. And these are all my opinions and mine only. The last thing that I'm really irritated about, and it just happened here a little earlier, we're worried about this civility thing. This was not by any means professional or following lines of civility by telling fellow Counselors, colleagues, to suck it up, no matter how you felt. We're all elected. We're all representing the people. And to throw language around like that just because somebody doesn't agree with what's going on, and Mayor, I've got to criticize that you agreed with it. And we need to look at that stuff as well. We're all representatives of this city, no matter what capacity we are, and we need to do the best thing that's for our taxpayers, the people that we represent in every one of our districts in the city as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. Mr. Bender would be next.
Okay, well, Counselor Olson actually took a couple of my ideas, but I just wanted to mention a couple of things. And first of all, one is the one that I've mentioned before and has to do somewhat with the rules of civility, and that's respect for differing or dissenting opinions. And we think of our great nation, the Supreme Court, when they have a ruling, what do they have one of the justices do? Write the dissenting opinion. And one other one, and Dan covered the portion about abstention, but abstention is just that, it's a non-vote. And no reason needs to be given for that. And you can do that, you can abstain from voting whenever you choose to do so. And I also have that on record from UW-Madison professor emeritus, Dr. Larry Larmour, on that. And that's really all that I have to say. Oh, I also told Counselor Finslin why I abstained. The reason I abstained is because I didn't want it to be a no vote.
I'm not going to apologize for what I said because what I said I meant. And when I, last year, did not get the appointment I wanted, I was very upset. And Dan, you told me in no uncertain terms, "Too bad, tough." So I didn't say nothing. And I, like a good councilperson, let it go. Didn't whine, cry, or nothing. Just let it go after you and I had our discussion. But as far as me saying "suck it up," "suck it up," really, I meant it and I'm not going to apologize for it. Thank you.
We have a counselor who is in transit and I don't know how long we should wait. She's having car trouble and is on her way. So, but, Mr. Mertzic, yes?
Well, should we just go into an intermission right now because I can wait?
No, you can make your comments. Feel free, go right ahead.
I guess, well, the first thing that I'd like to address is the civility issue. And I guess to say "suck it up," it's your opinion and that's fine, but I would just like to make something clear that in the military, it's not a democracy and that's where you have to suck it up. I've had to suck it up routinely in the military. You get a mission, receive a mission or an order and you execute that mission or order and you suck it up. But the whole, how are you doing? The whole idea behind a democracy and we're here doing what's best for the city is the idea that you don't need to suck it up. You make your, you base your decisions on what's best for the city and what's in the best interest of the city. And if you don't feel as though that's in the best interest of the city, you talk about it and you debate it here and you vote what you feel is in the best interest. And so it's, to suck something up, I think you're doing a disservice to the city. That's how I would address that. And then also, I think it was, I believe, in my opinion, it was inappropriate for the mayor to laugh at a comment like that. I think that that, that's kind of egging the situation on or exacerbating the civility Then on to the committee appointments, I think, and actually Counselor McDonald brought this up last week, that I am on several, three committees that do not have an alternate position. And if this, if this is being based on me being absent due to my military service, I probably shouldn't be on those committees without alternates. I don't know why you would put me on committees knowing that I'm going to be absent without alternates. And I think Counselor Olson brought up a really good point with that. So I guess I will volunteer to step down from those committees and just maintain the alternate positions due to that reason. And then I would also like to make it clear, and actually Counselor McKenzie sent this employment discrimination for military service members and he handed out to all the council members. I think she got one yet. And I haven't had time to really look it over, but I'm well aware of what these laws say. And I don't think they apply to me here as a city counselor, as an elected official. In fact, I haven't, in all my certain military service, I've actually never been discriminated against, I don't think. So this is kind of a new experience for me to be kind of backed into a corner for my service to my country. So this is, it's a unique and a new experience for me and I guess, I just would like to say again that basing this decision off of my military obligations is, doesn't sit well with me at all. And so, and I'm happy for, thankful for some of the support I've received, but overall I'm discouraged.
Counselor Bridge.
There's a lot that bothers me about this. This idea that there's a lack of respect for military service or discrimination isn't just not true, it's insulting to an extreme degree. This is the only job you'll ever have, that you don't have to do the job and you get to keep it for at least two years at a time. So, you know, I don't see where that comes from. Counselor McKenzie at the last meeting made a comment that he'd heard from another counselor that they didn't attend meetings as an alternate. And he was talking about me, that my failure in telling him that story was not to complete the story. I was in close contact throughout that year with the Chair of that committee and with the Finance Department. It was the Finance Committee. When it came time for the committee appointments, I informed the President and Vice President of the Council at that time that I did not feel I was qualified to be a standing voting member of that committee and they disagreed with me and put me on there anyway. These are vastly different situations here. As far as, you know, the committees that don't have alternates, there's a, there's a big difference in those committees than there are the regular standing committees like HRC and Finance and License and Fees and a couple others in their functions to city government that, you know, some others like the Tree Board and, you know, Tourism Development, that don't have the same functions and they're made up of a lot of citizen members as well. So, you know, there's, there's a lot of argument here. I hear talk of not having respect for senior or seniority or sitting there, but I see a complete and blatant lack of respect for seniority and experience here over the last couple of years. And I thoroughly do not understand why one counselor thinks that what they have to say is so much more important than everybody else that they go stand in front of the room to make their statement. This is where we sit and this is where we speak from. As far as the civility is concerned, I don't think expressing opinions, and I don't think saying "suck it up" is that strong of an opinion myself for this. You know, it may have been in, at a point of, I don't know if, you know, if that counsel was recognized at that point or not, but I don't, I don't see that as being overly harsh.
Any more comments? Counselor Finslin.
Yeah. I spent a long time deciding what committee assignments to make. And I feel that these other committees that do not have alternates have equal importance to our city and I think attendance at them is part of the responsibility of a counselor. When you accept the job as a counselor, you know that largely our work is done through committees, whether you're on a standing committee that has an alternate. But the Deer Committee still needs representation from our city. The Pega Committee needs a representative from our city. The Tourism Development Committee needs representation, as do the Public Museum Boards. They expect you to show up at their meetings, whether you're on the Library Board or the Tree Committee or any of the other committees that are such an important part of our city that we feel valued. When I started this job as a counselor, there were about forty or fifty committees. There was an awful lot more committee assignments. I think my first year I had like nine, I think, committee assignments. I attended every one of them and I still attend quite a few of the regular committees that I was assigned to at that time. The Mayor's Commission on Disabilities. I've been on that since the very beginning, you know. License and Fees Committee. I've been on that since the first day I started on the council. That was one of the committees that was one of the standing committees. I certainly did not disregard Mr. Mertzic's service to the country. I don't know who else on this council has served in the military, but I have. And I spent my time there honorably, I was discharged honorably. And if I couldn't participate in something while I was in the service, well, that was unfortunate. My predecessor, Don Hindman, was, he didn't, wasn't asked to resign, but he left the council because he could not fulfill his commitment to the council of attending meetings regularly. And I'm not suggesting that Mr. Mertzic should do that, but I also don't think you should be absolved of any other committee responsibilities unless you wish to be absolved of all your committee responsibilities, and I would be happy to promote that sort of an agenda. If you wish to leave all of the committees and just serve as a counselor, if you'd state so publicly, I would be happy to oblige you in that way.
Counselor Bridge.
I think some of the things that I've said may have been taken a bit out of context, I guess. The main, the main issue here is, as far as the discrimination, is not putting me on that committee due to my military service. And I don't understand how that can be argued really. And I don't understand how, I still can't wrap my mind around what the, how that reasoning works. I, I think it would be appropriate for, well, I think, what are the rules actually for stepping down from committees? I mean, is it, is it an all or nothing thing? I don't, I don't, I don't believe that that, Frog, can you shed some light on this? I mean, is it a rule that I have to step down from all the committees if I step down from one?
No, I don't believe we have, promulgated by ordinance or policy or anything, any other document in writing, the protocol for removing oneself from a committee or a number of committees. I think frankly, the role of the letter that presumably was circulated to all Counselors well in advance of the last regular meeting was to become acquainted, was for council leadership to become acquainted with what the interest levels of various councils were for the various committees. And as I recall, that, that letter wasn't received or it was received after the committees were sketched in or something along those lines from Counselor Mertzic to President Finslin. So I guess the short answer to your question is, I know of no hard-fast rule that dictates or governs resigning. Of course, there's nothing to resign from right now because the committees haven't, the committee appointments haven't been ratified. I think though, the invitation though, is to articulate to Counselor Finslin if it's your preference not to serve on committees. That's in play. I don't see that as unreasonable.
Can I speak one more time?
You're still on.
Okay. I'd also like to point something out, and again, this is my opinion, that the real reason for me not being a standing member on this committee is, and I've been told this by other people, and it's my opinion too, that the mayor and the city administration wants to maintain control over this committee. And by having me on there as a voting member, it's, it's been pointed out before and I'll admit, I'm a supporter of unions and I'm, but more than that, I'm a supporter of doing what's right for the city. But I, I've been known in some of these meetings to ask questions and dig a little bit deeper and, and I think that, it is my opinion, that certain people want to maintain control of these committees and want decisions to be made without question. And, and I think I'm seen as a threat to that process and that's, that's the, that's the real reason. And I think it was, I think it was actually a mistake on the part of Counselor Finslin to say it was my attendance. I think he didn't, this is again, just my opinion and how my perception of things is that, that he used the excuse of, "It's an attendance issue," but then it backfired because then he realized my attendances were all excused due to my military service. So he kind of backed himself into a corner and dug a hole right there. But, but either way, it's, it doesn't really make sense to me to have somebody on this committee that, that questions the status quo and kind of digs a little bit deeper and looks for additional evidence on these very important things. It's, it's my opinion that the mayor, along with some of my colleagues, don't want somebody on that, on that committee that thinks like that. Or thinks a little more deeply, I guess you could say, and researches a little bit more. So that's just my opinion and my perception on what the real story here is.
Counselor Dobek.
I resent you saying that we counselors do not think for ourselves because we do. Nobody tells us how to think, how to vote, or what we're doing on committees. We are not dictated by anybody. And I'm sure that'll be said by everybody else on this council. Thank you.
Counselor Finslin.
Yeah, Mr. Mertzic is entitled to his opinions and I'm sorry he doesn't feel like his thoughts are valued on the committee. If I'd felt that he didn't participate and didn't have a value to the committee, I certainly wouldn't have continued his presence on the committee as an alternate. I've never stifled any questions from anyone at any of the committee meetings, especially Mr. Mertzic's frequent questions. And some of them I have felt come because of a lack of preparedness, like he hasn't read the grievances or followed up on reading the contract language prior to the meetings. And if that's the case, I think I'm entitled, in my opinion, that he would be better serving us as an alternate to the committee. And it would be good if he can attend all the meetings. If he can't, then he won't be as knowledgeable or prepared to debate the issues that come before the committee as the others who are there on a regular basis. My motivation had nothing to do with a pro-union or anti-union stance. I probably got as pro-union a background as anyone. I spent more than twenty years with the Federation of Labor. My very first teaching job was in front of my school with a sign on my shoulder, not in the building. I've done a lot of labor things. I've stood in front of Bennet Ford as a picket when they were striking. And I've done a lot of pro-labor things in my life and I certainly don't want to be considered anti-labor or anti-union. I think we also, as managers for this city, have to decide, not from one particular bias, you have to entertain all the questions, all the knowledge you have, and decide on the contract language. But it certainly has nothing to do with anyone's pro or anti-union basis. If you don't want to serve on a committee, just let me know. We will try to find other Counselors to do it. In fact, the next most senior counselor has already volunteered to serve as an alternate on the Human Resource Committee. And that would be fine with me too. I don't, I don't think there's any shame or discredit to being there. And if you care to ask questions at a committee meeting, all you do have to do is be there. You'll certainly be allowed to ask as many as you have.
Will the suspended roles allow Counselors to speak more twice?
We're going to allow this anyways because this is your business. This is not, okay. Counselor Hendry.
Yeah, I'd just like to voice an opinion that in my, you know, in my opinion, in my work on the council, I, I don't believe anybody's controlled by administration or the mayor or, you know, outside influence other than their own opinion and what they honestly feel. And some of us are more conservative and some of us are more liberal. We're just different that way. And sometimes we're more in line with, some of us might be more in line with administration at times, some of us might be opposed to it at times, but I, I don't think any, anyone's controlled. I've never come across any indication that would lead me to believe that.
Counselor Mertzic.
Actually, I'm, I'm glad that you, that you say that because I believe what you're saying. And again, it was just my perception and maybe my perception was wrong, but, but that leads me back to my original issue, is that, that this decision was based on discrimination. This decision was based on me being in the military and my federal service and not allowing me to be a standing member due to that. And, and again, I would have felt better with this decision if it were based on you thinking that I, I didn't research enough or I didn't read, read the contracts enough, which is not true. I came as prepared as I could possibly come. But I would have felt better if you had based your decision off of that instead of my military service. It would have been easier for me to swallow and actually I would have accepted it if, if it would have been a straightforward thing. You said, you know, "I don't think you're prepared, I don't think you're intelligent enough, I don't think you're capable of understanding these complex issues, therefore I'm going to leave you as an alternate for another year." And then maybe your second term, we can figure out how to work you into a standing member. But this reduces it right back to the idea that due to my military service, you're not allowing me to be on this committee. And that's not only unacceptable and for me, but for many people. I think there's a lot of people out there that would, would agree with, with what, how I feel and what I'm saying here.
Counselor McDonald.
I also, I resent this whole thing that's going on. If anybody wanted to claim discrimination, it could be me. And it has nothing to do with discrimination. This is what's right for the city. I'm a female, new on the council, I'm the one that's being asked to come off of committees. And to me, if you want to claim discrimination, that would be discrimination. Nobody's discriminating against anybody. We need to do what's right for the people and what's right for this city, not what's right for us. It's all about the city. So let's just get down to business and do what we need to be doing. Thank you.
Counselor Herrick.
Thank you. I just want, apart from what's been said already, I just, I just want to say that, well, it would have been nicer for the list that we did receive as far as what committees we want to be on. I think that was a great idea providing, you know, maybe some of the committees, maybe for even some of us that only been on the council for a year, might be maybe too much for us per se. But I think what I'd like to see, what I was looking at when I looked at that list is that, okay, well, here's, here's the committees I really want to serve on, even though I don't have that much experience in there, it'd be nice if you really want to serve on a particular committee to be assigned to somebody that's a senior counselor. So that way you can talk with them and you can learn from that. So I, in respect to that, or if you want to be on a particular committee or continue to serve on that committee you're on, that'd be great. But kind of give, you know, each council, if they want to serve on a different committee, that experience. I think that would, that would help and it would expand that council's horizon. Even though we could attend the meetings, give them that, him or her that additional responsibility of being a voting member would be great. Thank you.
Counselor Finslin.
A large part of the decisions on the council assignments were made on the return of the survey that I did send out to each counselor. Eight of the ten Counselors returned theirs. Counselor Olson did not and Counselor Mertzic did not bother to return them. I don't know their reasons for not doing so, other than if he didn't receive it at an appropriate time. And if they had received it and didn't want to return it, neither one made any effort to contact me prior to my decision. The calls that were made to me by a few Counselors, you know, that was it. You know, I did my best to assign people to committees that they were familiar with and if there were changes requested by a counselor, I made an effort to make their changes. But I have the eight returns surveys that I have and I did not receive it from those two Counselors, for whatever the reason.
Counselor Olson.
I didn't get mine in the mail, Bob. I didn't even get invited to the tree planting ceremony, so I raised a little heck with Ronnie. I just got mine late and I didn't have any problem with my selections. Tom, to answer your question, the reason I go up there is so I can look you guys in the eye because I don't think it's appropriate right now that Chuck Hendry's sitting behind me and can't deal with what I might want to say. So in the future, I'm going to do the same thing. We're not glued to these chairs. I think we've had a lot of discussion here, both good, a little bit contradictory, a little counterproductive. But I said at the State of the City address, I said it in my campaign, we've got ten people here, we've got ten attitudes, but I truly believe at the end of the day, we're doing what's best for the city. We ran into a little hitch here, a little hiccup, and I think we need to get through it all. Whatever decision Mr. Mertzic makes will be Mr. Mertzic's decision. But overall...
But overall, we've got some important business coming up here and I think we need to get down to work, all ten of us, whether we get along or not. You know, we've got a smile next Tuesday when we take a picture, so I think it would be appropriate to call a question if there's no further discussion.
Do you call a question? Okay, let's take a real call vote.
The motion is to approve the Committee assignments. Counselor Olson.
Yes.
Counselor Bridge.
Yes.
Counselor Bender.
Yes.
Counselor Murcic.
Yes.
Counselor McDonald.
Yes.
Counselor Hendry.
Yes.
Counselor Finsland.
Yes.
Counselor Herrick.
Yes.
Counselor Dahlbeck.
Yes.
Motion approved.